Jill Batry.
The whole team.
Whole team's here. All right. This evening's agenda is, first item is approval of the agenda. Any changes? Ball's changes by anyone?
No.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Johnson to approve as presented support by Mr. Goldie. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 1-6-7-0. It's an opportunity. Let's see. Approval of the minutes from regular meeting, February 1st, 2018. Mr. Secretary, any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the final draft of the meeting minutes for February 1st, 2018, and unless any commissioner has revisions, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky to support the minutes. To approve the minutes as presented from February 1st, 2018. Support by Mr. Yoncho. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Next item would be opportunity for public comment. I don't see anyone in the public present this evening.
I were to go down there and make a public comment, or could I stay here?
Stay here, and make your comment if you would like, Mr. Johnson.
So, we were in the Walmart. In Sam's Club last evening, and when we got there, there were three full semi trucks parked in that lot. Noticed that by the time we came out, there were four. By the time I turned to walk back in to speak with the manager of Walmart about this parking of semis out there, there were five. And I was afraid to come back out the door because they were multiplying like rabbits.
You seemed to have an effect on them.
Yeah. So, anyway, I did have a nice chat with the attending manager at Walmart, and said, "We don't allow you guys to park your trucks, or anybody else to park their trucks in these parking lots," and that was one of the conditions when we approved this. And I don't know if it's you that needs to call the police, or me, or what we need to do to get this taken care of. But I assured her that I would bring it up in the meeting tonight, so that's why I'm doing it. I did not go into any detail as to, you know, being on a planning commission or anything like that, but I just told her that I was real active as a member of the public when this was built, and wanted to make sure it was a first-class operation, and had no intention of, you know, opening a truck lot. And so, in Mr. Huffman's absence tonight, I will continue his quest to get the trucks out of the Walmart parking lot.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Brown?
Just to build on what Mr. Johnson had to say, I just had a kind of a casual impromptu meeting with Chief Wile, and it was also our superintendent, as well as our manager regarding this, so they are abundantly aware of the problem, and are searching for a solution. So, your, the senior management is certainly aware of it.
Who else is making a comment? The one thing that I saw this past week out there that I hadn't seen before was a trailer sitting there that was not attached to a cab. So, it seems like it's getting worse.
Yeah.
And I guess we're not saying they can't park someplace on site, but maybe behind the building, or some other location might be better. Thanks for everyone's comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I might, I also received comments from Chief Wiles on this. We sent code enforcement staff out, took photographs, started a case, so we're going to move forward on talking with folks in the management, higher up in the management of the Walmart company. We've got a few contacts and names of people to get ahold of who should be able to do that, but we're not going to suggest that they can, or should, or would be allowed to keep them out there. They're not supposed to, and unless they come in and ask for a change in the ordinance, and we granted it, we would not, which we're not suggesting, but we would not allow them to do that. Actually, it's written in the ordinance to prohibit that, or the PUD, so, yeah, they're just gonna deliver that.
I don't think these are Walmart trucks.
No, they're not. Actually, they were staying overnight, is what we were told, so that becomes an even greater issue. So, we're, we've become aware, yeah, about halfway through, well, maybe it was Tuesday this week, I guess, and so we're following.
Well, isn't that site technically owned by Grand Saquon? Those are just rented lots. Isn't Grand Saquon's problem, technically, to take care of their site and enforce the rules?
I don't know what the rental agreement or lease agreement is between Grand Saquon and Walmart.
Because they're not Walmart trucks. It's like, Walmart, you're like, what are those still?
They don't want, if they're required to.
Land lease?
Right.
Just building, or what?
Mr. Chairman, if I may? I know Chief Wile said that the owners and operators of those rigs have told the officers when they've gone out there that there's no place for them to park their rigs in the township at all. They're not allowed to park them in their own home driveways or anything like that, and so their comment is, where are we gonna do it? If there's no place we can have our rigs in the township, you're basically chasing us out. That's just what they tell the officers when they, when they arrive to speak to them.
Better spot, in my opinion.
There's a truck stop on Grambling Road, just outside in Monday Township. There's no reason that, those people drive hundreds and thousands of miles, there's no reason they can't drive six miles to a truck stop where they have the proper facilities to refuel, to spend the night, to shower, go to the bathroom, all those things. I think that's a null and void argument, that there's no place in the township.
Yeah, I see lots of trucks in there, yeah.
But it's what it sounds like if they're talking about they can't put it at their house. These aren't guys in transit, these are people who live here.
Right.
Yeah.
They're insisting they're residents of the township.
But they can't park their trucks, so it's against the law.
Because I think they're contract carriers, is what they are. I think they're independent contract carriers.
Okay, no good comments. I'm sure it sounds like Mr. Lloyd's gonna be following them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll convey information back to the commission. I'll be doing my monthly report anyway, so that'll be a part of what we did from an enforcement standpoint. And then we'll follow up.
Are you in a position to try to find a spot?
No, I'm hearing what's being said, and I think I'll definitely let folks know that there's that facility that you've mentioned, which is a good thing. Maybe we just need to work with them on some additional signage. We did talk a little bit about that. They may need to put some other signs up out there, not sure how that's signed. But maybe we also let people know where there is a facility. You know, if we've got a problem area, maybe we can work with them and identify, you know, a place, and give them some direction on where they might go to avoid, you know, tickets and other bad things.
There's one other issue, if I may continue this, Mr. Chairman. Where they're, where they're dropping or parking their rigs right now, if a Sam's gas station comes to fruition, that's actually where I think a part, a part of that parking lot will disappear.
Not backside?
As well. If that ever, you know, if it comes to pass.
Okay, I guess we'll close the semi-public comment portion of the meeting. Go on to the next item on the agenda, correspondence. We have planning and zoning news, any other correspondence?
Mr. Chairman, we did receive apparently some correspondence from this Institute for Justice, which you might want to acknowledge, you know.
I didn't see that before.
Yeah, that just came in, so we wanted to make sure you get that. As a matter of fact, I'd like to make sure that we get a copy of this to Jill.
I think it's good information. You might see some of this before. I didn't have an opportunity to read it, what's, I guess, the summary?
Apparently, this is an organization that has prepared a model sign ordinance in view of a Supreme Court decision about signs. Apparently, some organization out of Arlington, Virginia, that's probably sending this to every, you know, municipality all over the country, would be my guess. I haven't read it, I decided to read it because I saw it as soon as I walked in.
Thank you. Any other correspondence?
Just a comment on the solar energy. I don't know if it was China or Japan over the weekend, or the last few days, are building a massive, massive energy source. So, they're, they're going forward. Showed a picture of just acres and acres and acres of solar panels.
Actually, just off topic, but to follow up on that, yeah, I had read an article, I think it was in Morocco, in northern Africa, where, you know, you just got acres of desert and sunshine, and they have some huge, huge installation of solar panels. Good way to make use of that scenario, something.
Maybe that's where the Chinese are, why they built those man-made islands out there. That was an attempt at humor, I wasn't serious.
Okay, moving on. Next item would normally be old business, I don't believe we have any new business. Sign ordinance, public hearing. Yeah, there's nobody here.
They're all in Washington, helping out with this.
Well, there is some bad weather.
Yeah, yeah, she came out.
Well, it is a great ordinance, so maybe there's just not a lot of concern.
Probably it.
That's probably it.
I guess, is there anything from a schedule standpoint that we need to push forward with this?
We did talk about wanting to at least move ahead with some of the changes as they relate to temporary signage, and to be consistent with case law regarding the Reed versus Gilbert case. And I think Mark put it really well in his email. He summarized those, those three areas. So, it was the temporary signs, it was accommodating the Tech Village signs, and extra accommodation for those businesses within a certain distance of I-75. So, from that standpoint, there's not a lot of regulatory changes that would impact most businesses in the township. So, that, I think, and it sounded like maybe there were some, there are some concerns. Mr. Bandersky submitted some photographs that he was kind enough to take over the last month or two, because you did them last month, too. And so, that maybe there's some larger sign issues that we want to talk about in the future, but then now, we could handle some of the, I don't know that they're necessarily housekeeping items, but they're, they're cleaning up the sign ordinance in a manner of speaking. But having said that, with the weather, I don't know how the planning commission feels about continuing the public hearing until the next month. I don't know that that would be detrimental.
I was asking from a schedule standpoint, if there's anything pressing.
Not necessarily, but Joe makes a good point. I mean, we're a little behind the times, if you will, with regards to the, you know, recent legislation. It would be good to have that in place, and, you know, Tech Village is out there, be good for developers, whomever might be coming along, to know what they might have to do. So, getting this done, this piece, isn't, isn't a bad thing. That was a great point about, this doesn't have significant effect on a lot of people, but there's some challenging things in our existing laws with regards to temporary signage, and I think it'd be a good idea to button that down as soon as we can. And you guys have done a good job of putting this together, and, look, I'll just say it like this, from my perspective, sign ordinances can go on forever. I mean, you, you will never stop if you, you know, keep, because you'll always find issues, and everybody's gonna have different opinions, so the, the fact that you've sort of defined how and what you want to deal with, you've done a good job, and you've done a good job of dealing with it, so now you're actually ready to, to move that forward. We're in a good position. Plus, keep in mind that this item does have to go before the township board, so it's not as if, you know, this is the only chance for anyone to ever see it.
Chairman, maybe this is a question to Mr. Brown, as well as Mark. Are there any particular issues that have come up, say, at the, you know, for variances or just complaints to the township about the sign ordinance? I mean, I get the impression that we haven't had a lot of, you know, people who are concerned and complaining about it.
I can address that when it comes to committee reports, if you'd like. Or I can talk about it now, whatever you want, Mr. Chairman.
I prefer you to talk about now, what we're thinking about it.
Sure. Well, the zoning board of appeals did have scheduled hearing for two cases, variances on signage, one for the New Fairfield Inn, and the other one, the name of it is just flat escaped me right now.
No, it doesn't. You just don't want to say it, it's security.
Oh, security, oh, yes, security. How could I not remember that? Security Park, down on South Saginaw, yes. And, believe it or not, at the last minute, both of them begged off, and we had no, no cases after all, even though it was scheduled, they asked for a re, yeah, continuation.
Broader question, I think, what Mr. Colter asked.
But, yes, but that's what they're talking about, is, you know, that they, they need more, more signage, larger signage, and we, we do hear that.
Yeah.
From, you know, it was the same thing with McLaren at their new facility there on, on I-75 and Holly Road. So, we do see that, you know, quite often.
Probably will continue to see it.
I don't think it's gonna, it's been that way for many, many years.
Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of comments, but first I would say, if, when we're done, and you get this all cleaned up without X outs and underscores and so forth, it'll look a lot, lot nicer, you know?
It will.
And then, we won't be bouncing around as much. I, on page 10, Roman numeral 6, it talks about landscaping materials around so that the sign, including the street numbers, are visible. I would add the word "always." Are always visible, because, you know, at some times, the sign looks, you can see it, but then there's growth there that's no longer visible. And then, I want to come back to my previous comments, and the next portion there having to do with electronic signs. I still feel very strongly that five minutes is way too long, and it should be something in the timeline of like, two minutes. If you're on the road driving, the next 20 cars are gonna see that same sign, or 30 cars, depending upon the traffic situation. And if you just sit there and watch it, you sit there forever. And I think that defeats the marketing people's plan. I mean, we have, we have quite a bit of restriction in there, as it is, relative to the colors and scrolling and all that other kind of stuff, so I would just make my one last plea that we change that time to something less.
Anybody else have any comments on that?
I just wanted Mr. Chairman to kind of indicate my concern, as I've indicated before, that they are, you know, those signs are very distracting, and I think the more frequent, the, you know, interval between them, the more distracting they're going to be, because once you see it change, you tend to kind of look at it to see if it's gonna change again. So, and I don't know that it's a big concern, I mean, are we getting a lot of complaints from people who have electronic, or changeable signs, that the interval was too, too long? I don't think so.
We haven't heard that.
Yeah, so I don't, there's not a problem, I don't know why we're, we're gonna change. Anyway, that's my opinion.
I'll simplify the process. I make a motion, we change the five to two.
I'll support it, for at least for discussion.
Mr. Bandersky made a motion, and Mr. Brown has supported that motion, I guess for, you're asking for a vote for the planning commission, it sounds like. Correct?
It seems to me like the notion about having a changeable sign is not so that people can see a sign and read multiple messages while they're driving down the road, but it's that the next day, or the day after, when you see the sign, it may have a different message. And I don't think that the interval is that important, but I agree with Ms. Colter that having the interval shorter may lead to more distractions.
Distraction to who?
To the drivers.
I strongly disagree with you.
That's fine.
Because the drivers are not sitting someplace for five minutes. Probably not even two minutes, if they're on the road.
I'm thinking they're traveling past the sign.
Yes.
And then, and then it changes from a purple sign to a yellow sign, and it, and it distracts them.
Well, if they're passing by the sign in a five-minute interval, it's gonna change anyway. So, it will, you know, the, the change is gonna happen, whether you have five minutes or two minutes. Granted, it's two, two times sooner, but that's to a different driver group.
It's two times more per day that it'll change, or two and a half.
Anyway, I made my motion, and depending upon the results, I'll certainly shut up. Which is, I'm not gonna go there.
There was a motion by Mr. Bandersky to reduce the time in the ordinance from five to two minutes, is that correct?
Yes.
Change the sign. That was supported by Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments before we vote?
How about a snide remark? Can I make a snide remark? Okay, no snide remark.
Well, when we talk about signage like that, and it's changing the message, as Mr. Bandersky was talking about, I always think of the travel agency over on Hill Road. And if, if, if I'm sitting there at the traffic signal at Dordon Hill, I can see that message board there, sign, very easily, because it's not that far away. And it seems like during that time when the traffic is stopped, and I'm stopped, it seems like it changes two, and has two or three messages for other kinds of trips and things, or that sort of stuff. So, it seems like it changes very rapidly as it is. And so, if, if I'm driving through there, and the rare occasion I get through the intersection of, I'll be stopped, I'm by it in 15 seconds, or whatever it is, and I don't really care because I don't see the next message.
I'll just, for an opinion, what do you usually see in your other, is it all over the board?
It's all over the board. As I say, there's no one right answer. It really varies by community. Some will be as low as maybe a minute, and then others go up to five, 10. I think we even had one that was once an hour. I don't remember, I don't remember which community that was, but they were like, yeah, that's what it is. So, it's really a matter of your preference. I think, you know, your point about, has anybody been asking for this change, might suggest that there's not really a problem with it right now, but...
Any more? Are there one end to move individually, so we know?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
I abstain. I'm not, I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other.
Oh, you can't actually abstain.
I can't? Oh, well, then. Bandersky, I'll help you out. I'll vote yes, just because he's a nice guy.
Mr. Bandersky?
Yes.
Mr. Yoncho?
No.
Five to two, no? Staying at five for now?
I had my day in court, thank you.
It was a good discussion.
But I have another question on a different neon-type signs. We show one per building, I think, where it says, and I'm just thinking, down here on Perry and Belsey, it's in the city, Pizamia, they have two. One is a open kind of sign, which a lot of them are, and then there's one that shows a little pizza diagram and so forth. So, my question would be, is that inappropriate?
And you said it's in the city?
It is in the city, yeah, we don't have to worry about it, but we may have, you know, something like that come up.
Right.
So, I just put that out there as one extremely limiting.
It, for the neon-type signage, they would be limited in the township to the one, that's two square feet. So, probably the open sign, depending on how large the pizza is, or other picture.
I was gonna try to get a picture of that for your signage, but I just never made it.
I have, I have to get one. There's a sign company that makes the LED sign panels. They're big signs, and they're in the window of their business on Woodward and Pontiac, and they're all bright and flashing at all different things all the time, so I have to get a picture of that. I could actually get a video of that one, and I'll show it to you next time. But those are, and then they are just examples of ways that businesses can use signage to draw attention to their businesses, and, you know, if it wasn't a neon, neon picture of a pizza, maybe it was some other illustration of a pizza that may or may not be permitted, depending on the color of it, the size of it. It could be a window sign, but not if it was lit, like that.
Mr. Johnson?
Do we regulate human signs?
No.
Like that Statue of Liberty dude that's out there? That's just flat out not allowed?
It's not, it's not a good idea to try to limit those.
A question that just popped to my head when we talked about the neon signs, it's not a specific question about this, but maybe how it fits in here. Down by, we're on, at Baldwin and Saginaw, we've had a pizza place there. The latest one's in there is called Ez- Enzio's. It's actually a very good pizza, but they literally now have red, I call them Christmas lights, but they're not around their window. You drive by, it's red. I mean, it's not a big deal to me, but I'm just wondering, is that okay?
We, that was something that we talked about last month.
Because it's very different. It's like, alright, you know? Is that, there's lights around, does that, does that fit this at all, or is it not regulated?
We talked about not having that be permitted, because of that reason, and especially the flashing ones.
For the red light district, honestly.
And that's what goes on with food cats will further down.
Would that be considered Christmas lights?
Well, we don't regulate holiday lighting. We talked, we talked last month, I think, about using this, that section as a way to enforce that in the interim.
Right, to, to basically consider those LED lights, which you're referring to, which is what those strips of LED lights that folks are getting.
I'm not necessarily saying it's bad, I don't want to get them in trouble, but it's just different.
In, in making these two definitions basically the same, the tubing, and calling those LED lights essentially, you know, the same as tube lighting. That's what they're, I mean, that's what's happened in the industry, as communities have said, no tube lighting in the windows, because a lot of businesses were, you know, framing their windows. With tube lighting, and the ordinance gets written to say you can't have tube lighting, so they come in and they put the LED lights up. Some of them trail and run, some of them blink, some of them just are, you know, static, but that's the, you know, that's the change in the industry to kind of get around the issue. And, you know, it's been out there for probably good three or four years. I mean, it's, it's not brand new.
Right.
You know, they've been doing that for a while.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Bandersky?
I'm sorry, I gotta make one more comment, and I address this to Mark. You know, we have in here, "Street numbers show contrast with the background, they are clearly legible." I would hope that you change the one out in front on the township monument to where there's a good contrast before this gets approved.
Fair enough. Matter of fact, that sign is out for RFP to replace and change the whole thing.
Okay. Got a question. Do we restrict the intensity of the white in the sign?
For, yes.
That's an action that we did, but what did we end up limiting that to? Because this is not, I was this morning, going from 475 on the 75, heading south, on the right-hand side, there was a billboard sign, I kind of came under great hustle, like, whoa, that thing is really bright.
Here's what we have in there that, that addresses that, now whether the numbers are bright or not, and we're on page 10.
Under...
It talks about brightness before, just before sunrise, just after sunrise.
And where it's measured.
Page 10, down at the bottom.
Letter D, little d.
And I, I have no sense for what that... And I, I have no sense for what that is. It'd be nice to be able to flash something and say, this is what we're talking about or go see this sign in someplace.
Right, if it seems too bright, then you would let code enforcement know and ask them to go out and check it.
Do you have any feeling for what this measurement is?
In terms of intensity? It's, it's a standard intensity level.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Colby?
I know at the last meeting, we talked about the subdivision entrance signs and I know that was an issue that Mr. Horshard brought up. And I was looking at the proposed language and I, it says that as an alternative to having just the one sign in the boulevard, you could have two one-sided signs placed on either side of the entrance street and parallel to the entrance street. But I think a lot of subdivisions seem to have those. If you have two, you know, they're angled or sometimes they're even. And I'm wondering why you have the, why would require them to be parallel to the entrance street?
I think that's a good.
Oh, I'm sorry, page six.
Page six.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the, those, the one-sided signs, actually, I think that, that you've caught that. I think that should be not parallel to the entrance street, but parallel to the main roads. It'd be perpendicular to the entrance street. So they wouldn't be on an angle necessarily, but, but perpendicular to the entrance street so that it's not the same one as the one that's in the median, if that makes sense. Like the ones that Mr. Horshard was talking about when they were mounted to the wall that typically is.
Right.
Parallel to the main frontage street, I guess, is really what it would be.
Well, some of them are curved though. I mean, I know.
They are.
I know.
I think we need to just give some thought to that word, parallel.
Yeah.
If we're going to.
And some of them might even be angled.
It's a good point because if you apply it literally, it's going to be a problem.
It may be.
Yeah, so maybe we can just use the word facing or something.
Yeah.
The main primary road or however.
Frontage road.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll make sure that's clear.
Yeah. The alternative would be to have a sketch or picture depicting that.
That would be one option. Somebody might come up.
We did, don't we have some?
Not for the boulevards.
I don't think we did one for that.
Or subdivision access.
Okay. Maybe it's because I went right off.
I think that ordinance seems like facing. There's some option in how it's. Okay, any other comments on the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve the revisions to the sign ordinance and clean up the ordinance and then make a recommendation to the Township Board.
Board? There was a motion by Mr. Banderski to pick up these items we described and support by Mr. Yoncho to send this to the Township Board. Sounds like there's a discussion.
Good catch.
I think before, before we make that motion, I guess we opened the public comment portion and didn't close it. Is that correct or did we? No, I don't need a motion for that. Just open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to comment and that might be present in the public that we're not seeing. None heard, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up. Motion by Mr. Banderski to send this to the Township Board for approval. Support by Mr. Yoncho. Any further discussion? Vote is in order. All those in favor, seconded by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes seven to zero. If you're going to pick up these changes and it goes to the Township Board, they're next. Very good. Committee report, Mr. Mansour is not here. Mr. Lloyd, planning zone.
A few things tonight, sir. First of all, let me pass these down if you don't mind. I'm going to keep one of you, but Jill was kind enough to bring in some monthly. Are these just new signs?
Well, quarterly.
Quarterly.
Right, they're quarterly.
Okay. Okay, great. So good information for us to have as always, so thank you for that. The other thing, well, I'll leave that to the chairperson. Couple of things going on in the planning arena. We're looking at some grant applications, opportunities, I should say, with what's going on with building. We're doing some process mapping to try to define and identify how and what we do and how we do it and what the steps are so that we can consolidate these. Look at maybe some disconnects we might have, coordinate that with planning and engineering as well as DPW. So we're beginning the process of putting together a streamlined approach to the permit processes. So when we get that going, we'll do a presentation to the commission. In addition, I'll, I'll let Ed talk about the ZBA items. And then with regards to some of the planning things, keep in mind, we have a meeting coming up, a joint meeting on the 27th with the board to discuss, among other things, the master plan. Very important meeting to be there and talk about how this team is being put together and what that means, roles and responsibilities. We did finalize, and I know that this was mentioned at our last meeting by the chairperson about Midstate Litho and Bethel Apostolic Church. And we did receive the final plans from the church. We've stamped them, approved them, scanned them into the system, so we have that. Midstate hasn't come through quite 100% yet, so we're waiting on those plans, but we will. Keep in mind, what happened there was these projects were both approved at the Site Plan Review Committee, subject to the applicant bringing in all the corrections. There were very few minor kinds of things and we dealt with those from an administrative standpoint. We're able to finalize those administratively. Just helps keep the project moving along a little bit, doesn't bring the thing back before the Site Plan Review Committee for what might otherwise be some pretty standard, easy things. As I mentioned, we are stamping final sets of plans now. We did receive correspondence from Davison. They adopted their master plan on January 10th this year. Burton did theirs last year on 12/7, so we've received correspondence on that. We put together a rather comprehensive calendar and I'll roll that out to the commission. I don't want to send you everything all at once, but that'll be coming your way. And what we've done there is identified and established some, some real, you know, solid deadlines and dates for applications to be submitted by. And if they meet those deadlines, you know, they're going to be on that agenda that they're applying for. So we're, we're just kind of tightening that up a little bit. You know, it's a little helter-skelter. We worked real hard around here and definitely with the benefit of having Jill and Giffords Webster on board to be able to kind of get a report done in a couple of days, literally. They were able to turn things around and we were able to get things on an agenda. That was a little hectic, you know, for us internally, administratively and, and. So what we're doing is just establishing some better timeframes so that it's a little more defined. It makes it a lot better for everybody. They, the developers really want to know, when is that deadline? What are those dates? So we're able to help them get that information. We are beginning what's called a departmental review committee meetings. Those will be starting, actually, we'll have one next week on a project coming up. And what that is, is we, we, we have an application, we have a pre-application meeting. We have an application that comes in. We distribute that to all the departments before we determine it's, it's complete. And then we take a quick review to see if there's any glaring and outstanding issues from any of the departments, ask the applicant to come along. They can participate in that discussion. And what that does is it helps to get a lot of potentially major issues out of the way early before either the applicant, you know, commits more financially or to prevent us and to keep us on task and to give us the ability to be a little more efficient in our efforts by getting everybody on board and dialed in early. We all know, walking around and talking to each other from that date forward, what those projects are. It used to be, we just didn't have that kind of communication. So we're opening that, those lines of communication to try to help with the review of these projects early on. And again, I'll be providing you with information on how these processes are being mapped out and laid out. I mentioned earlier that I'll be doing another monthly report. That'll come out tomorrow. That was well received, the first one, so we're going to keep doing that, of course. One thing that came up, it's kind of interesting. You all worked hard, as well as Jill, on Tech Village. And the cool thing about being here all the time is that, you know, when folks just sort of pop in, you know, we can go, you know, have a chat with them. And we had a gentleman come in, it's called The Blue Book. Anybody's heard of it, but there's an organization out there. They put together a collaboration of developers and, and contractors and so on. You've, you've heard of it. And it's a pretty big organization and they've offered to give us a booth at their next showcase. And they've also offered to give us a one-page advertisement. So I've talked with the administrator on that. We're, we're interested in that. I'm going to have a formal meeting with the gentleman next Monday. But our, our idea right now is to bring, you know, our Tech Village information there, have some flyers available to be handed out, information. I know Dennis has a pretty cool video of Tech Village that was put together. And my thinking, it's kind of always been this way, that goes moving, not flashing, but moving kind of visual aids that folks have a chance to see when they go to these kind of presentations. A little more effective, I've always thought, you know, if you've got a bunch of boards, that's great. But, you know, when you've got something that's moving and when it's cool like this is with some flyovers and other things, it's just kind of a nice attraction. So we should be able to get some exposure, more than we've done so far. We really haven't taken a big plunge into the marketing, the village, Tech Village yet. But, you know, this opportunity came along and it just seemed like that's, that's what we probably ought to be moving forward. And we'll also be talking about the township's efforts to facilitate development, streamline the processes, things like that. So, you know, we want to let folks out there know that, you know, the, the approach that the township is looking to take is one to help accommodate and facilitate development. High standards, high quality standards for development, but, you know, we want to establish a pretty streamlined approach to how we get these things done. And then I made myself another note, just to remind you again about the March 27 meeting with the board.
Thank you for the reminder. Questions for Mr. Lloyd?
I have one, a canon. It just goes back to my comments last month about spam on the Grand Blank website. Because when I checked my mail this time, it just seems to be more of it.
Yes, sir?
Now, what I, what I don't know are those people that are work associates or whatever with somebody else that's in that network? Or is ours just a planning kind of a network?
Well, if it's the emails that you get from us, if that's what you're talking about. Well, it's not, it can't be. We're not sending you out spam. What you're getting is somebody who's tapping into however they're getting our email distribution list. I don't know how that really works, to be honest with you. But I did tell our IT guy, Robbie, about this and so, but you're saying you're getting more or at least it's continuing.
It's still there.
I will, I will tell him about that again tomorrow and see what we might be able to do, if there's anything we can do to prevent people from however they obtain that list. Because I get that even on my own out there. I see things from somebody who I go, oh wow, that's old Bill, I'll be darned. And then I go, oh, wait a minute. And I realize, I look at the other names and usually it's two or three. It comes from like high school basketball or team lists and stuff. It's just, just one of those kind of technical issues that I think it's just trouble and problematic for a lot of folks, but we'll look into it further.
Okay, thank you.
Something we can do. Thanks for bringing that back up.
It seemed like there were a couple on there this time that had been through some sort of filter that was alerting you that on mine I got there. But yeah, you're getting them from like someplace a long ways away.
Yeah. Yeah, well, all I can say, don't, don't ever open them if you notice it to be spam. I, I have no idea what it might do to your computer, but.
Yes.
Mr. Brown, zoning board of appeals.
Yep, we're back, yep. Déjà vu all over again, Mr. Chairman. As I said, we had two cases, a Fairfield Inn and Security Park. Obviously both commercial development. And I think when the Site Plan Review Committee gets together with a developer and they're looking at doing a, a project, certainly signage is always foremost in our, in our radar. And typically, I'm going to guess 99% of the time, we resolve to the satisfaction of the petitioner, signage. And so we never see it at the zoning board of appeals. Occasionally we do. And in both cases that we were scheduled to see that were postponed, Fairfield Inn and Security Park, they're not satisfied with what the ordinance allows and therefore they're looking for more. And so that's essentially what, what we see. And it's not often anymore.
Questions for Mr. Brown? Site Plan Review, we saw TMI on Quality Way. For those of you that aren't familiar, their history, I think, started with like packaged air handling units. They've kind of expanded into some other things. But what they're doing is they're putting kind of a display of a data center on their site. It's like approximately 50 by 60 prefabricated building. Saw that today, actually. Gave preliminary approval. Left the final approval to Mr. Lloyd to review to see if they confirmed that they picked up our comments. It was a little bit of screening. We had quite a bit of discussion about dumpster enclosure. We did look in the ordinance and found that we had some leeway in special circumstances where this is located or surrounded by industrial buildings. We're having them put in some additional landscaping on a couple of sides of the, where they've got their dumpsters typically.
Where is this located?
It's Quality Way, which is off of Baldwin Road.
Okay.
It's next to the railroad tracks. Got, yeah, Ring Screw Works and L&amp;L something or other that's out there. Right next to the railroad tracks is a good, good way to look. But the area they're talking about is also quite a distance from Baldwin Road and you're going to have to be trying to spot a dumpster back there, driving by at one or two miles an hour, it's going to be awful tough to see, so. That's the only thing we've seen the last month.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Jill. I'm going to go back to the sign ordinance for a minute. Because when Mark talked about scrolling, I'm thinking of the signs, monument signs, where then they have the LED lighting going across. And is there any regulation on that? Any place?
It's the same regulation.
We have it in here?
It's the same, it's the same section.
Okay.
Scrolling, there's no scrolling. Scrolling at all. It's either on or it's off.
Pardon? Are you seeing some in the township?
Palace Restaurant. There's, there's a monument sign, there's some scrolling in there. Pardon?
How old is that sign?
Oh, probably two years maybe.
Yeah, not long.
Because they got it, you know, they went to a new owner. And so the sign changed somewhat. But I.
I'm going to guess.
The word scrolling just triggered my mind. And so we're saying none. That's what our ordinance says. Because that falls deeply into the distraction dilemma. And usually it's in red and red is the lousiest color to try to read in those signs. Same thing in the gas stations and others, you know. Red is just, that may be the best financial color, but it certainly doesn't help.
It's a, it's a good color. No portion of the message needs changing. Don't change color, fade in or out in any manner, anything.
Part of the message is just something to attract you.
No, it's a.
It's one of the.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Narrow ones and it's just black background, red.
It's like the scrolling on the bottom of the TV, you know.
It could say. It could say, uh, special, and then, wow, it could be, you know, it could be...
Thanks.
Twenty, and four per dollar, I don't know, but it can't continually roll across that message across the line.
Thank you.
Okay, some good discussions. Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adjourn today's meeting.
Point.
Next meeting scheduled for April 5th is Easter week. Spring break. So if you bring these, whatever, we're not bringing the sign ordinance back in, because people couldn't get here because of that, and I thought, well, next month wouldn't be good either, because it's Easter week, so. Just bringing that up, I don't know if there's flexibility, Mr. Yoncho and I chatted about it just for a second before the meeting started, but I don't know if there's flexibility, and when you want to hold it, or anything like that, but it is Easter week.
How many people have plans of, of the commission and won't be able to attend?
That will be two.
I would currently be here.
I think we'll have a quorum, but it might be worth, maybe polling prior to the meeting.
I was just gonna say, if we know we have a known lack of quorum, we'll post accordingly, so we'll, we'll stay in touch, of course. We'll check and see what we got, you know, going on the agenda, too.
Okay, we had a motion by Mr. Banderski to adjourn, there's support for that motion, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are adjourned at 7:53, no, 57. 57.